We were on video.
Roll call.
Let's do roll call.
Here.
Trusty Hickey.
Here.
Trusty Jones.
Here.
Trusty Racus.
Here.
Assessor Katsberg.
Here.
Hello. Highway Commissioner Tom Wiser.
Here.
Tax collector David Scriven Young. Absent. Bookletsky. Present.
On to the next item on the agenda, public comments. Do we have any public comments before proceeding? Hearing none. Can I, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes?
All right.
Second. All right. Fifty-second, Jones. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Trusty Hickey.
Yes.
Trusty Jones.
Yes.
Trusty Racus.
Yes.
All right. The December minutes pass. Ten minutes or two zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna be moving on towards the trustee vacancy interviews. Before we move into executive session, just gonna give you all just quick update on how that'll work. I sent out the email, but we're gonna be limiting the interviews to twenty minutes per person. It will be an executive session, so what that means is if you are not, are currently collective official or the candidate being interviewed, I'm gonna ask that you wait in the lobby. Then we'll call you when it is your turn to join us for the interview. After the conclusion of the interviews, we will deliberate amongst the board with regards to the our preferences for candidates and ultimately decide whether we feel confident enough to proceed to a vote during the regular business portion of our meeting. And if we will, we will let everybody know. And if not, then we will also let everybody know what the process would look like going forward. So that is gonna be it. Any questions before I move to towards a executive session? Now, can I please have a motion to enter executive session for the trustee vacancy interviews?
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you. So with that being said, we are now in executive. All right. While it's printing, I'm just gonna move that we tabled that formal bill for the time being until we get a copy of it and move on to approval of bills and claims. Can I please have a motion to approve the Town and Grove District Fund bills and claims?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Or any quick, any questions or comments on the bills?
Sorry.
Just the Comcast.
Yeah. What's the date on the Comcast? On the bill? Because we would still be getting some
Really?
Some final, and there's also internet, not just
Right, yeah, yeah. The internet should be there, but it seemed like it's the same amount.
I'll make sure they're close.
I don't know if rates fluctuate, all that stuff, but
I'll make sure we get that checked out first.
Yeah.
Because I know they've already fully transitioned off of the
Right.
Happy with the phones? Everything we get okay?
Okay.
Yeah. Still working through it?
Yeah. Little headset or handset where we probably issue, but he came in. My, Michael.
Yeah. Mike Forgoney. Can you make five copies of that, please? Thank you. Okay. All right, so with that being said.
I like the function, but I'm not that used to it.
Yeah. Just learning curve.
But, yeah, so he was very good about, I think, you know, salvaging it. Took some time, but I think he had ordered the
Got it.
And things were okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just getting used to anything too.
Yeah.
Some capabilities.
Yeah.
They cry. Cry from around.
Yep. Go ahead and do a roll call on the bills.
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Trusty Hickey.
Yes.
Trusty Jones.
Yes.
Trusty Racus.
Yes.
Right, it's the, what month was it? December bills, passport, zero. You want a better reports? Are we waiting?
Tom's getting that out right now.
Yeah.
It's already been I'll be with the printer.
There he is.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. So the copies were assigned this. Right. So this is the resolution. These, I don't think I missed any blanks. Okay. So first line is just, it's just basically say, Medina was elected, she resigned, the resignation created a vacancy, were required within sixty days to fill that vacancy. We're gonna be voting on Jim or James, and then now therefore be resolved as officially appointed to fill the vacancy effective today. And then this will be provided a copy of this ten as well, and then you'll have this for the records as well. So with that being said, can I please get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero one dash R warrant of appointment? Second motion. You can understand, you can second the motion.
I can second.
All right. Any you guys wanna read that, make sure I didn't get any titles in there really quick? Oh, I will fix just one piece. We will, for the record, circle him and his appointment. I just copied it exactly from a few other townships, so, and they didn't include it that way. Hearing none, can we please move on to a roll call?
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Trusty Hickey here. Save for the record.
I am staying.
Staying. Getting. Trusty Jones.
Yes.
Trusty Racus.
No.
Okay. So the resolution passes two to one, and one extension.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. Start with you, Bill.
Oh, I'm just gonna leave this so you can read yourself a little bit instead of wasting so much time, but the, the one I wanted to, I really wanted to talk about migrants, if you haven't heard, we were talking about that yesterday. I, all right, I had a meeting. A lot of people that are misinformed, so I don't know if other people are misinformed, but basically, we were told if you don't have a train station in your township, you, you don't have to worry about the migrant situation. Because the migrants that are coming up, they're being transported by buses to a community that has a metro station, so they can go from the metro station to the city. If you don't have a metro station or a train station where they can get that transportation, it's not happening. This is then that was brought up by several different people in the Illinois Association Township Administrators. So it's, they're just getting a number. I don't know if anybody has anything on that, that where they've been dropped off in a town or an area where there isn't a metro station, but we know, there was forty people, there's not one of them said that they, they had one. DuPage Township. You hadn't noticed that they, because we're talking about food pantries, which really shocked me, that they actually have, have to throw away an entire dumpster of food every day. Wow. Every day they went and turned it away. So obviously Jackie has said, anybody at all that wants to come over and get food, if we have anybody we know of or whatever, they're not asking for where people are coming from because they're just throwing it away. And so she's wide open to anybody coming over, prefer, even though really, kind of any time, but preferably more in the afternoon, so at least the DuPage Township people can grab it on the morning. But they're not, they're not asking where anybody's coming from. So if you do know somebody that is in need of food, the food pantry in, what is it, in Suromia, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For now.
They're welcome. Other than that, I'll just let you read the rest and save, save our time.
Question. Thanks, Bill.
You bet.
Mary, I know you have something to present to us.
The budget. And I thought, do I make you a copy? So I'm really new at this part. I, what I did was, I talked to Mark.
Only copies of
I was gonna say, this is, this is like the
Okay.
We're gonna need to sign this tonight. Does he need to do it?
Bill.
There's typeless on this. We can't find this.
What?
We've got a food thing.
I'm sorry, but
I'm aware of some other organizations that Seattle, some churches. Be okay to say, hey, you know, they do.
Tom, I'm sorry, do mine. Bill, can we make these changes so that we can sign it tonight?
Changes?
Yeah.
Do we have a
Michael.
Yes.
Send me the thing.
Can we make these changes? We'll have, they'll make the changes tonight, so we can sign this tonight.
Is it a PDF?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Are you talking about him herpes? I'll take care of this right now. I'll send it to Tom once more. I need you one more time. Okay, so we all have the copies, please.
Okay. So nothing super familiar, I did have a, I did talk to Mark because I'm still clarifying some of the line items, like computer software and hardware. I had Jerry come in the other day and talk about, we always talk about what needs to be replaced computer-wise and getting some of the cost of that. And so when I was talking to Mark, I asked him to add a line, so there's a new expense line, office equipment purchase. And that's for six thousand dollars. I will need a laptop. I'd like a scanner too, because it's a great time saver. You can just email, you can, it's a lot of help. Instead of going to the copier, hit and scan.
You don't have to explain, you have a scanner.
You have the bills.
So, and then, because I'll be in here quite a bit. And then scanner, oh, and probably a monitor unless there's another one I could use, because once you have the two screens, you cannot go back, because we have so many different, you know, systems and, you know, you're on, well, everybody does, I'm sure. So, so that's the line item for the six thousand. The other one, the ten thousand one hundred, I'm still getting clarification. I need maybe a full list from Jerry on what that encompasses. I know he talked to me about the malware and ransomware, and I think that's rolled into that. So what I need to do is clarify with him that that's not currently including purchasing new computers. I'm not sure that, you know, I'm gonna double, double up on it, so I haven't gotten back to him, so sorry about that.
Okay.
So I did as much as I could, talked about replacements, so it's right around six thousand that we need, because as they age out, Jerry is a handy Daniel report that he runs, you know, and which is the oldest, because they, you know, only last I think we, the oldest one is twenty nineteen. So that's, that's that line. The other ones are kind of similar to, you know, kept to where we had the other items, like the, the training and education. I know that something came up recently through the county that we need a couple of classes for Brandy and Bell to take a general home set. It's a big thing for, that's, that's probably a huge chunk of our job is trying to read through those. It's a complex thing, because people are shifting around and there's ever-changing policies from the county. It's always a challenge. So they would be, I believe the cost, and because it's located at Joliet, it's at Joliet Junior College, it's such a rarity, and you're like, you don't wanna grab onto those. We always wish we could go, but then the cost would be three ninety-five for Brandy and Bell. We thought maybe two people could go. Now that is only available in February, so that's the part, Chuck was saying we're pretty close to the coming out okay with the budget. I'm still trying to digest all of this and what's where.
Too many.
So that covers yeah, training. So Patrick, your piece is Jerry. He, he did go up in price a little bit. He charges us, he was charging us a thousand dollars a month, and now he's gonna go up slightly to what was that? Eleven fifty. So that, that should cover him. That's really, in essence, most of his costs to the township.
The eleven, the eleven fifty a month, what does that encompass?
That's like his retainer, I guess you'd say, like, if we have him come out, like, he doesn't bill us separately, so at least that, to my knowledge, and I'm not super knowledgeable about it yet, but he, when I say retainer, that's the best word I could use for his services. We call him, we email him, he makes a lot of changes for us. I know during the appeal this year, we got a new inquiry system, so I believe that encompasses all that kind of thing that he does.
So he's done some stuff for me, and I don't know what else he does for Carolyn or you, but so we're just included in you? Is that what you're thinking?
No, we get, I, we get itemized bills separate from
And you know
Yes, itemized hourly rate.
So like when he did that, you just get an hourly?
Yeah, you know, and I have to really clarify that honestly, I didn't really get too much of a chance to look at all of them.
Okay.
I, I wanna re, I wanna clarify what really is in each of the line items. I was trying to figure that. So that, the large item for the ten thousand one hundred
Okay.
That also includes licenses too.
Yeah.
So
Okay.
So I guess that's a big chunk of it.
A few questions that would be helpful for me, if you can just get those, and there are ones that you already had, no, I have top of mind, as far as like the office equipment purchase versus hardware within the computer hardware, just to verify that that ten thousand one hundred would not include potential upgrades that you would like for equipment?
Yes.
So that's one question for you. If we could just get clarification as far as what exactly encompasses is, because I don't know if that also includes a software fee or not, or that's a separate fee, so if we can get just clarification on his monthly.
I know, and I'm not, is, you know, an accounting person too. I was like, I tried to go over with him, you know, just like the other day too, so I apologize, I didn't really
No problem.
Have much.
You're fairly needed, Joe.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Give you this one.
Yeah, I do, I like it all laid out myself.
I didn't send
Let's see. And then, so I think most of these are travel conference, I, I got clarification from Mark that that's and I kind of thought that, because usually if you go to Springfield or Lowington, or luckily sometimes just drive to Naperville.
Yeah.
That's, that's aside from the training and educational classes, just, it was good to hear that from him. I assumed that, but I didn't really know that for a fact.
Understood.
So
Okay.
Kept that about the same, because usually we're trying to stay on cycle. We generally have a couple of people going each year to keep up with the cycle, to be able to, you know, retain the CIO. That's how I ended up having to take it a second time. I had to go through all the classes again, because it used to be, you had there for life, and they, they stopped everyone. On the state, yeah. My opinion, I shouldn't answer. Let's see.
And then the payroll expenses?
Payroll, that's
That's up almost, that's a little over twenty-three thousand dollar increase, so that's a
It's a lot.
Almost a nine percent increase. I mean, is that your proposed increase for raises?
Raises, figuring, yeah, to, to get them where, closer to where they should be.
Okay.
But also, I included twenty thousand of that is for, I should give you the, sorry, I could do in the detail too, a new hire. We're hoping, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe we can talk to JJC about the interns.
Okay.
To maybe start someone out, and then maybe if we wait long enough, because twenty thousand, you know, if we hired someone, maybe we could do that towards the end of the year. We gotta get a commercial person, even if it's to start them off with the data entry and
Yeah.
I mean, it's all the logistics, that's a huge part of it, much less, you know, the appeals and that. So while I'm here, as long as I'm here, I can certainly, you know, I'll be stepping in on that.
Okay.
Amber and I will work together. They, there's been no volunteers yet. So
One of the things I'll say, and this is, we'll have a more in-depth conversation on this, outside of this, I have had a few of the, like, assessment vendor kind of contractors who have asked about our commercial, and then they, they, like, fill in gaps in your staffing.
Oh.
There are gaps, and if you're not, I know we've had trouble recruiting for that position specifically. So they say they, they kind of come in and they're usually at a lower cost than it would be to hire somebody full-time, so let's have a, we'll have a further conversation on that and see if that could help fill in that gap.
Yes. Because the problem is, the salaries, well, the salaries are, are low, you know, that, I know, that should be the dead of wars, but compared to the other assessors, and now you get people with twenty, twenty, twenty years. You know, so that's a part of it, and I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. But back to that, there's, the problem is, there's, if you've got a seasoned commercial person in here, that's not even close to what they're gonna
Yeah.
want for pay, not even minutely close. So we could maybe have someone doing some of the guided entry on one hand.
Administrative organs to learn the space.
Yes, and maybe some help with the commercial could be a short-term thing. I don't know. I wrecked my brains about it, because I'm the one that was feeling my way through the commercial for years. I never volunteered for that, by the way. I was, okay, you get to do commercial. I did twice, happened, so
We'll have that conversation. I'll, I'll see the name of a few of those vendors and then
Yes.
We'll do some calls on those together.
So
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. Any questions from anyone else? Before we move on?
Highway Commissioner Wiser.
This is the key thing I like, with all you guys to say tomorrow, there's gonna be a lot of snow. I mentioned this before the meeting. We have a weather service person who buys like a very micro, he's looking at weather stations locally and then applying to a model. Just today, he's gone from eight to ten to twelve inches of snow. The last report at five o'clock today was so, yeah.
Tell me that is wet, this
Well, that, the thing was, is that, you know, WGN was saying that it's gonna be wet tonight, and then it's gonna get really fluffy.
It's supposed to be wind too, not that, I, they know more than I do.
I guess, I guess, our guys are ready. My team is ready.
I commute far.
But I want, I want, I really pray you guys all be safe tomorrow, so
And how about your guys? Everybody?
Oh, we're all good. We're ready. We're ready. We got all my, all the trucks, go out there right now. All the trucks are full of salt.
We have no more excess salt and have a great
Oh, we got that.
Sorry, guys, they've been doing great. I've been very happy with, I've been very happy with what they're doing in the Southern Michigan, so please let them know. I'm happy with what they're doing.
That's true too. On the record, the husband is the bus driver, and so he sees them all working so hard, and the people in general that he talks to, because he, I think a guy passed away, was in, um, Charlotte or something, one of the bus drivers, was always very happy with their work.
I'll just say, I live on, just across the line from the township, and we drive home, and your roads are, are great, and then we run into ours and slide the rest of the way home.
I can take it offline. I don't know if it's, they're just ribbing each other, but yes, stuff like that.
Perfect. All right, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, trustee Hickey. Okay, to continue the compliment train. I'm on social media, fair amount, I know you guys but I was going back and forth on a Facebook page that said they were like, well, it appears that some of Naperville might be in rural county, and I'm like, who doesn't just appear? It actually is. So in the course of that discussion, we were talking, it was talking about where roads are cleaned the best, and this woman said, without any prompting, Wheatland Township does an awesome job, great snow removal and brush pickup. I am also appreciative of the great deal they negotiated for garbage pickup for unincorporated residents. So so word for word, do mine?
It'll be good for the new show.
At all. So I just thought it was praise that I said that I would pass on, so the second thing that I have is, obviously, we finished off the senior committees. I gave you the wrong, but your last time it was five hundred and thirteen dollars that we spent at Vida Bella. So in checking, it looks like we have almost fifteen hundred dollars, that we ran the year, almost fifteen hundred dollars under budget. So that is good news, so there's room for growth, should we have it next year? And then my third thing is. I did a collection for another organization and it was for DuPage Food Pantry, and they called and said, hey. We have eighty fifteen pound turkeys. Would you know anyone that could make use of them? And I'm like, this is such more a poultry centric job than I ever thought it was going to be. But, um, so, um, working with the great people at the DuPage Food Pantry. And the people at Touch My Heart, which is a five oh one C three in South Naperville, they were able to, first of all. Loading eighty turkeys, that was my cardio for the day, but, um, they loaded them in a minivan. And took off and got them all delivered before anything lost frost, so amazing job there and just a great collaboration. And I can't thank the people at DuPage enough, they were wonderful. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kelly.
Trustee Racus? No, we're working. Trustee Jones?
Uh, just mentioned that scholarships are available through TOI, so if you don't need one, make sure to get the word out.
Yeah.
All right.
Next up is the clerk.
Anything else? You're good.
Yep.
Okay, um, I just have a few things, uh, let's see, um. We, as you all know, we filed the truth and taxation levies, that's taken care of, thank you, Bill. No new FOIs have been submitted, so we're starting with clean slate, we're hot up and, you know, waiting to see what comes in, and again, thank you, Bill. We are implementing just a better tracking system than we've had before, so, um, let's see how that goes, so I'm excited about it, because yes, I am that nerdy. And highlight Assessor Katsburg was sworn in today in the office this morning, it was really fun and cute, and her husband was there, and we took a lot of pictures and.
Thank you so much.
For absolutely newsletter.
We are getting it all.
It was good, it was great, and thanks for your patience, so anyway, congratulations again. And then I just wanted to inform the board of one thing, um, it's, I I had this email vendor sent me. You know, they do that, a solicitation email, this is like a social media monitoring firm, and I was just curious, because I do that at work too, so I was talking to him and. The the regulations around what is a public record on social media and what you have to keep. Is kind of more than I was, you know, I was expecting, so I'm doing a deeper dive in there, and as part of that. He also sent me some like best practices that some other townships are doing, like on their social media channels, you know, whether it's. Because you you have a channel and township has a channel and what platform you're on, whether it's Facebook or whatever, anyway, they're post, they write and post actual policy. Which is a good thing to do, so I just wanted to let you guys know, I'm exploring that, I'm gonna be updating Michael on what I find out. And probably maybe draft some policy type stuff, and ultimately we'll bring it back here for you guys to look at and approve, and we'll get it out there. Another thing to think about is staff training, personal and, you know, anything that anybody's posting for. The township, there's just a lot, you guys, I mean, you read the news, there's a lot going on, you saw the SEC hack yesterday, but. That happened because they weren't using two factor authentication, and I'm a starter, I'm a little bit out of my.
That's insane, that.
I'm a little bit out of my realm, but are we? I don't know.
So all of our accounts, uh, we only have Facebook for social media.
And then, I don't know, do they offer that even?
Yes, so like my personal account, which is how I would post through the township, is two factor authenticated, I will verify that everybody who has access.
So just things like that, so anyway, whatever, I I'm just like doing a deeper dive, I'll I'll share what I know and we'll try to like, you know, take things up where we can, where we should. So more to come, it's really, is really the long and short of it.
All right.
And that is it.
Don't we read Dave's?
Everybody has Dave's.
Oh, you said.
Dave's updated, didn't count, but I sort of put it in the. Dave's unable to be here, but, or I can read it.
You guys don't already have it.
I guess she just gave it to me, sorry, I meant for all of you.
So, uh, he just had a quick update, he's, since he could not make it this evening, he said. Since our last meeting, one grave was sold, two casket burials took place at the cemetery, January fifteenth, we will all. Or we will be at the cemetery to clean up any older decorations as well as holiday decorations. He said, as mentioned at the previous meeting, we have communicated this through signage at the cemetery, as well as a notice on the website. He said, we also received a generous donation from Township President Judith Mayer. Who included a nice note saying that the cemetery is so well kept by volunteers, and I appreciate their dedication and hard work. That was Dave's update. Moving on.
Supervisor Croner?
Yep, um, just really quick. Now that we have, we, I was holding on sending out a final copy of newsletter for print, because I wanted to get our new elected officials in there. So I'm gonna be finalizing that, if you have anything you would like to include, please get it to me by end of business tomorrow. To put into the newsletter. One of the things that I will be putting in there is with regards to our our energy aggregation, so as you recall, last year when we approved it. While it was lower than ComEd's, it was still high compared to historical norms. Well, ComEd has come in at a pretty decent rate below now what MC squared is at. Um, and I don't anticipate them passing MC squared short of another energy crisis in the next, you know, twelve months. So that being said, I'm gonna make sure to include that information in the newsletter for our unincorporated residents, so that they know the procedures for opting out, should they want to opt out. I personally live in unincorporated and I'm opting out myself, I was just giving it a few minutes to make sure that there were no changes. Um, and it looks like ComEd is gonna stay lower for quite some time. And then the last piece, hopefully, our February decennial meeting will be the final meeting. I did ask people to send me any notes or comments on to be included. I had a few call me and just give me a couple of quick points. So unless I hear from you all, I'm gonna kind of finalize my draft and send it out to.
What's the, give me a few more day, uh, I I have to send a note.
If you can have a notes to me by no later than next week, end of day for, or end of day on Friday, so that'd be January nineteenth. Thank you. And with that, that concludes my report.
Allegro's probably not working on Monday.
I'm sorry?
Allegra is probably not working on Monday.
I got you.
Holiday, and it's a big hockey holiday, and they're all like.
So I'll be. We'll be finalizing, and thank you for sending me your notes for the newsletter, I'll make sure that's all.
Did you get, I got, there was some pictures too that I.
In the patch piece.
And the patch piece, but also some other stuff that I sent.
You sent me a few photos, yeah.
Okay.
And then if I, if those don't work, I'll I'll let you know.
I'll let you know, and I I don't have any ego about that stuff, if you if you want or rewarded.
And just, if you can send me a photo from this morning, swear again.
Oh.
Yeah, if you can send me that.
The folks in the opposite, can you get, but that'd be great, there were some good ones.
Perfect. So with that being said, I.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna second that motion, good job. Nine oh four, nine oh five, yes. All right, thank you, everyone, um, I know you two did assign, this is not a.
Did everybody sign what they need to?
On approval, this is just verifying that we did make the approval today, so this isn't a vote, so you, even if you abstain, you can still sign.